This is the Good Government Show.
I don't know of any other place in the world that has a clean, flowing spring, like big spring, in the heart of a major urban area. You want to save money, encourage your utility to move toward renewables. I was watching my kids grow up and I just thought, I can't sit this out. Knowing what I know on climate change, I can't just say, well, good luck. I hope it all works out for you. I just thought we've got to do more to prepare people and be honest with people about what's coming. It's hard to figure out how people get good information and therefore how they can evaluate whether or not their government is truly representing them. But I think elections are a pretty good barometer. Government works best if people participate. Democracy is a participatory style of government. And if you sit it out, you won't be represented.
Welcome to the Good Government Show. I'm your host, Dave Martin. You're about to hear from an advocate, an advocate for fresh water, for clean water, for clean air, lower carbon emissions, and she's in the right place to make a difference. Action, that's what Travis County Commissioner Bridget Shea is all about. A newspaper article she read about climate change was her call to action. That led her to Austin, Texas, to work for an environmental organization. In our conversation, what she says is she realized that if we all don't start working on this issue of environmental change, we should all start measuring for our coffins. That's pretty strong stuff. But her action got her to work on environmental issues and now on the county commission. I met Commissioner Shea about a year ago at the National Association of Counties Conference in Austin, Texas. And I should add, it was hot. It was real hot. It was over 100 degrees every day in Austin, and we talked about her city. She talked about how she saved her favorite spot, a clean, clear water lake right in the middle of town. And if you didn't know it, the unofficial motto of Austin is keep Austin weird. Bridget says Austin's not as weird as it once was, but the spirit of creativity, of arts and music, that helps keep Austin a thriving city that's in some ways a lot different than other Texas cities. But I did ask, is Austin still weird? Listen for her answer and a good definition of the city. So after my break, my conversation with Travis County Commissioner Bridget Shea. That's coming up. The Good Government Show is sponsored by OurCo. That means our community. OurCo has found a way to make government more effective. OurCo provides the O U R platform. And this is an app that blends in-person and digital interactions to connect people with their government, their county, their town, their state. The OurCo app transforms meaningful conversations into reliable data. They can turn results into projects and programs the community has essentially already approved. It's sort of like a flash poll by phone, but without the call and in real time. And wherever community members are, maybe they're at their house or their office or where they're out just talking about local issues. Maybe the choice is between putting in more local buses or expanding the bike lanes. OurCo can get you an answer immediately. With O U R, you can engage your citizens or any group, learn what they want and build programs and policies that advance your county, your job creators, your constituents. So visit OurCo.com, that's O U R C O dot com, and learn how they do it. And while you're there, book a demonstration.
My name's Bridget Shea. I'm a county commissioner for Precinct Two, which is the most urban of the county precincts in Travis County, which means it's mostly the city of Austin. I have a few areas that are outside the city and I help run the county government here.
And we are in Austin. Tell me the best parts of Travis County, where we are.
You know, one of my favorites is Barton Springs. It's this beautiful, cool, massive, spring-fed pool in the heart of the city. And people make pilgrimages to come see it because it's so rare. I've challenged people and I don't know of any other place in the world that has a clean, flowing spring, like big spring, in the heart of a major urban area. And the reason why is because we fought to protect it. I had the great privilege to head up the SOS Initiative, which is the Save Our Springs Initiative. And it was our great David and Goliath story. We beat the company that owned the world's largest gold mine to protect Barton Springs. So that's, it's always my favorite. It's my, it's this really sacred, special place.
Now, I have to disagree with you on one point. Having never been to Barton Springs, you said cool. I'm from Brooklyn. We're here in Austin in July. It's 104 degrees. Is it really cool?
Yeah, it is. It's a constant, pretty constant temperature of around 72 degrees. So it is the tonic for the unbearably hot weather here. Yeah.
It must be very popular.
It's incredibly popular. It's packed.
So you were able, you just said you were able to save this. What were they trying to do and what were you able to do?
Well, Freeport-Mack Moran, which owns the world's largest gold mine, was trying to develop a city the size of Waco in the watershed for Barton Springs. And they were seeking a bunch of variances from what was then a pretty weak water quality protection law for the city of Austin. And the residents of Austin rose up and said, no way. You're not going to ruin and pollute our favorite swimming hole. And we organized and we passed literally by a two-thirds margin, well, 64%, so three-quarters majority, in the highest voter turnout for a non-presidential election in the history of the city to that point. And we passed the strongest water quality ordinance in the country by citizen initiative.
And did they really want to shut it down, cement it over, put up a big building? What was the plan?
Now, if they built a city the size of Waco in the watershed for the springs, it would have polluted the springs. And 31 years later, we're still able to swim at Barton Springs because of what the citizens did to protect it.
Is it a very popular spot?
Hugely popular.
How often do you go there?
As often as I can. Yeah, it's really remarkable.
How many people are probably there right now?
Thousands.
Really?
Yeah.
It's that big, too?
It's massive.
How did you get involved in the project to save it?
I was working here, I was working for an environmental organization in Austin at the time of the city council hearing on the request by Freeport-Mack Moran for their Barton Creek properties development. They wanted to get a bunch of variances and skirt having to comply with what was then a pretty weak water quality ordinance. And thousands of people showed up for the hearing at the city council. It went on all night long. And at the end of the hearing, which was about 6:30 in the morning, the council switched the vote. Going into the hearing, they were all in favor of granting the variances. At the end of the hearing, they voted it down.
And how long have you been a county commissioner in Travis here in Austin?
This is my ninth year. I was first elected in 2014.
Your mission seems to be to protect the environment as a county commissioner, locally doing what you can. How did you get interested in this? How did you get involved in this?
I actually came to Texas in 1988 because of Dr. James Hansen's testimony to Congress about climate change. It was a front page story in the New York Times. I literally read that story and I put the paper down and called friends in Washington and said, we all have to drop what we're doing right now and work on this or we can measure our coffins and get in. And people said, there's an organization that's starting an operation in Texas and they're looking to hire and they do really good policy work and they do good electoral work. And I said, sign me up. So I was hired and came down here to work for Clean Water Action in the summer of 1988. And I've been here ever since, really focused on trying to stop climate change and then prepare people for the impacts of it. We weren't doing enough of either.
Since 1988, are you more optimistic or less optimistic today?
I agree with the consensus of the global scientific community. We have a 10-year window to get this right. And after that, the kind of feedback loops, the warming of the oceans, the things that we're seeing happen will be incredibly difficult to reverse. And we can't control what happens after that. So I do believe we have the tools and the technology to solve this. What we need is the political will. And I think the people by and large have it. We need our leaders to develop the political will and the backbone to do, to take action. Because we have all the technology and the tools to solve it.
Have you won over commissioners one at a time here?
We are in, I would say, very significant agreement on this. The entire commissioner's court is. I'd say the majority of the Austin City Council is as well. We have a pretty progressive community in the heart of Texas. So the political leadership here is on board in general on this stuff.
What about the rest of the state?
I think it was Rick Perry running for president who said Austin is the blueberry in the tomato soup. But a lot of other parts of Texas are changing. Most of the urban areas are strongly progressive, in favor of addressing climate change. The suburban areas are flipping and the rural areas are losing population. So the state's changing.
Should we all feel optimistic that things are heading in the right direction?
Well, if we start electing people to do the right thing, yes. It's up to the people. And people need to pay attention. I mean, that's the other thing that surprises me is I find so many people aren't paying attention. When I ask them why, they say it's depressing. Like, I get it, but...
Wait till you see what depressives are.
Yeah, exactly. Wait till you see what's really coming down the pike. Yeah.
I understand you were able to get some wind projects started here. Tell me about them and what were you able to do?
Well, I was on the Austin City Council in the early 90s and we worked with then state leaders who were progressive and who wanted to put together a wind project in far west Texas. It was the General Land Office and the Lower Colorado River Authority in the city of Austin. So the three of us partied together, joined together and put in the necessary investment to place the first wind turbines in the state of Texas, in west Texas. And then the city of Austin, which has a municipally-owned electric utility, sort of like a co-op, except it's municipally-owned, bought the energy from it. And so it started Austin Energy on a path of very ambitious renewable energy. More than half of the energy source from the city of Austin now is renewable.
Yeah, but the problem with wind turbines is they kill birds and they're ugly.
Well, look at what fossil fuels do. It kills the planet. I think I, I understand the issue with bird migration. I don't think they're ugly. I think they're incredibly beautiful, but...
But that's the argument, right? That's the argument against it.
It is, but I think it pales in comparison to the downside of virtually every other source of energy. Sun is the, is the most, has the highest potential. It's got the greatest amount of energy and, and so the greatest potential as a renewable energy.
But there's really no one all-purpose fix, is there?
No, I think you need a combination of things. So solar, wind, geothermal, energy efficiency. It's an enormous amount of energy that can be saved by just having building codes that require homes to be more energy efficient, all buildings to be more... In fact, we've done that in the city of Austin. I know it because my husband worked on it. Despite the growth, which has been enormous in the city of Austin in terms of population, the peak load use, which is what you have to build extra power plants for, is when you peak, has stayed relatively stable, considering the massive population growth. And it's because we have codes that require our buildings to be energy efficient. We're not wasting energy all over the place.
What do you say to folks who argue, I don't want my gas prices to go up, solar panels are too expensive to install, I, you know, electric vehicles are silly because I can't go far enough and the technology's not there for batteries? I mean, how do you argue with that?
I'll start with natural gas. They need to do their research. If they're saying that renewables are more expensive than fossil fuels, that is not accurate. Market, check the market data. There may be occasional peaks due to weird fluctuations, but if you check the data on a market basis, renewable energy is now equal to or cheaper than fossil fuels. So you want to save money, encourage your utility to move toward renewables.
Tell me about the wildfire drills.
We asked people, when I first got elected, what would be useful for the county to do? We've got a limited range of authority, but what do you think would be useful? And someone whose house had burned in a wildfire to the east of us in Bastrop said, you know, we do fire drills in school and sometimes at work, but we never do them at home. And, and when the fire hit his community, people didn't know what to do or where to go. And so we reached out, we found a community that was very fire vulnerable. They were at the end of a long, windy, one-way-in, one-way-out road. And we asked them, would you be willing to be part of an experiment to see if a fire drill is a useful thing to do? And they said, absolutely. We've been trying to organize it ourselves, but we can't all by ourselves. So we spent about a year and a half practicing, planning. We were actually ready to go sooner, but then there was a real fire. And so all of the, all of the first responders that had been working with us said, hey, timeout, we actually have to go fight a real fire. But when we ran the drill, about half the residents participated and we had a social scientist do a survey of all the participants. And they said, A, it reassured them because now they knew what to do in case of a fire instead of just being worried about it. And B, they got to know their neighbors better. And there was just a greater overall sense of security and well-being as a result of it. So we think there's tons of value in, in doing a, in doing a fire drill. We just think there's a lot of value in doing a fire drill.
So have friends just stopped by?
Actually, I think I know them, but I can't be sure.
Okay. Well, we're, we are, we are here in Travis County at the National Association of Counties Convention. You're one of the hosts. What are you excited to show off here?
You know, I feel like we, we have some remarkable programs. We just did a presentation this morning on our habitat conservation plan. We were a unique ecosystem. We're sort of a mashup of the coastal plains and the tectonic plates being lifted up and forming the hill country. And we have a really large number of endangered species because of this mix of ecosystems. We created a habitat conservation plan to protect the species and protect their habitat in the late 80s, early 90s. And it's been incredibly successful. It's managed to preserve large swaths of beautiful green rolling hills, which people love. It's improved the property values for the developments around it. And it's allowed developers to develop more quickly because they are also contributing to the fund to preserve more land. So it gives the developers more certainty about the timeframe rather than waiting years to go through the federal fish and wildlife approval process. They can get an approval process through the county in a matter of weeks. But the trade-off is their property tax revenues go into the fund that allows us to acquire more land and preserve more land. And it's been a huge success. We've got over 27,000 acres of land that we've permanently preserved and protected.
How did you switch from being an advocate to a county, to an elected official? What made you make that, make that jump? That's not, it's not always easy.
I still view myself as an advocate. But yeah, it was harder to go from being a journalist to being an advocate because that's really frowned upon. And I was a journalist in a past life. But I honestly, it was my kids. I was watching my kids grow up and I just thought, I can't sit this out. Knowing what I know on climate change, I can't just say, well, good luck. I hope it all works out for you. I just thought we've got to do more to prepare people and be honest with people about what's coming.
Why did you think that as an elected official, you would be better than you would be as an outside advocate?
I'd be able to implement policies that could make a difference. And we've done that. So we did the fire drills. We did change in the emergency notification system. Most people aren't aware, it's the federal government that funds, for instance, the 911 system in all communities around the country and also funds emergency notifications so that when there is a disaster, you'll get a warning on your phone. At least that's how it's supposed to work. But when I took office, I discovered that the emergency notification system here in sophisticated, tech-savvy Austin and Travis County was almost entirely landline-based. And nobody I knew was still using landline. So we went in, we evaluated the system, and then we just migrated it over to being a cellphone-based system. So we improved the reach from 7% to above 70%. So now when there is a real life-threatening emergency, you'll get a notification. You'll get a warning. We won a national award for that program as well. And then one of the other things we did was adopt a very ambitious remote work policy during the pandemic. And we've saved a million, 300,000 our first year on utilities because not as many people were in our buildings and we didn't have to heat and cool and light them as much. And we've dramatically reduced the greenhouse gas emissions from our employee commute. And our two largest sources of emissions from the county operations were the energy we used in heating and cooling the buildings and the employee commute. We're also transitioning our fleet to electric vehicles.
So the motto for Austin is keep Austin weird. Is that fair?
We've, we've all embraced it.
Is Austin weird? And is it staying weird?
It's not as weird as it used to be. It's now horribly expensive and a lot of the people that made it weird have been forced to move out because they can't afford to live here.
What made it weird? What, what was the weird part?
It was this really lovely mixture of sort of a hippie mentality that was very attractive to musicians and artists and people who were very creative and thoughtful and participated in the community in many, many interesting ways. The community created Eeyore's Birthday years ago from, you know, college students. And it's still a huge and wonderful festival that happens every year. South by Southwest grew out of the weekly alternative newspaper, the Austin Chronicle. And it's still, for my mind, the best gathering for tech and music and film. I mean, I haven't been to every festival like this everywhere, but it's, it's a phenomenal gathering of, of creative, smart, unique individuals. And that's been sort of the hallmark of Austin and Travis County for a very long time.
And this is Willie Nelson's home? Yes?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's a pretty good creative.
Exactly.
All right. So now that was all the warm-up. So that was the warm-up. Now we're going to get to, we're going to get to, we're going to get to the, our Good Government Show questionnaire. After you get done with this episode, hear more good government stories with our friends at How to Really Run a City. Former mayors Kasim Reed of Atlanta and Michael Nutter of Philadelphia and their co-host, journalist and author Larry Platt, talk with guests and other mayors about how to really get stuff done in cities around the nation. Check them out where you're listening now or through their nonprofit news site, thephiladelphiacitizen.org/podcasts. All right, here we go. From where you sit, as now a county commissioner, previously city council member, what is good government? Define it.
Taking care of people who can't take care of themselves. Bottom line. Government should take care of people who can't take care of themselves. And it should, and it should represent the everyday person, not the super wealthy who can take care of themselves.
How do you judge your success?
Ultimately, it'll be whether or not we can reverse climate change.
Are you feeling, are you feeling confident? Do you have success?
I'm somewhat hopeful.
How can voters, the constituents, the people who live here or anywhere, know if they're getting good government? What should they use to hold people accountable?
That's a good question. I feel like because media has become so fragmented and social media has been just polluted with so much fake information and fake accounts and people utilizing it for really, you know, dishonest purposes.
Well, we're trying to help.
Exactly. Yes, this show is, is not that. But it's, it's hard to figure out how people get good information and therefore how they can evaluate whether or not their government is, is truly representing them. But I think elections are a pretty good barometer. And I've now been elected three times.
If people feel like they're not getting the government that they want or maybe deserve, what should they do about it?
Vote that person out. Vote in a better person.
You've been in city government now and county government for, I think, about 15 or 20 years now? Yes, something?
The, I was first elected in 2014 to the commissioner's court. So this is my ninth year and I was on the Austin City Council for three years, so 12 years.
What would you like people to know from your experience of the last 12 years? What would you like people to know about how government works?
Well, government works best if, if people participate. If, if it's just left up to the special interests who are there to make money off of government policies, then it's not going to work well. And it does mean that people have to pay attention and they, and they have to participate. Democracy is a participatory style of government. And if you sit it out, you won't be represented.
Who is your political hero?
Well, that's a hard one. FDR, actually LBJ. Go to the LBJ Museum while you're here. I had no idea how much good he did. But I think those people really did remarkably important things for our government and our country.
You've been in Texas for how many years now?
35.
35. Before that, you lived in?
North Dakota, Minnesota, Philadelphia, Washington DC.
Oh, hi. All right. Well, let's just stay with Texas. I'm here, I'm here in Travis County in Austin. I'm going to be here for a few more days. What must I make sure I have? What's, what's your favorite local dish? What must I eat? Where, where should I go?
You definitely should try Salt Look BBQ. And I know I'm going to P O a bunch of other barbecue makers, but that's my personal favorite. But you hardly can go wrong with any kind of barbecue here. And I would recommend a pilgrimage to Barton Springs. You don't have to jump in, but just look at it. Just go see it. It's beautiful.
If you're having a dinner party at your house, what are you serving?
Something I can fix easily. Especially in the summer, I have a favorite pasta dish with fresh tomatoes and brie and basil and just marinate it and then...
So is barbecue just the thing everybody here in Travis County eats in Austin?
Well, barbecue, tacos. There's, there's a tremendous amount of really great local food, grown and produced locally.
From local farms?
Local farms.
What do they grow here?
Lots of vegetables. There's a great production of, I would say, healthy, organic meats, lots of great cheeses, especially goat cheeses and cheeses that are more easily made that don't have to ferment quite as long. But you get, you have a lot of good choices.
You've had an interesting career as a, as a journalist, as an advocate and as a politician. Did you aspire to politics growing up? Was it something you thought about or was it something you always avoided? Did you want to be, were you a class president? Did you want to be President of the United States?
You know, I, when I first saw the Austin City Council at work, I was horrified. I literally, when we were, when we were trying to protect Barton Springs, I had to sit in the back of the council meetings on a number of occasions. And I thought to myself, oh, thank God, it's not me up there. What a terrible job. And after we passed SOS in the summer of 1992, people said to me, you need to run for city council. And I said, I'll run all right, as far away as I can. It was a very difficult decision because I was not drawn to it. I was not attracted to it. But at the end of the day, I felt like I needed to, to protect what we had won in passing SOS by citizen initiative. And I served one term on the Austin City Council and was done. And it wasn't until I forgave some of my enemies from that time period that I was even willing to consider running for county commissioner's court.
Do you love it?
I do. I feel like, I feel like I'm in the right place at the right time. I feel like I can do things that make a difference, particularly around climate change. And I can help educate people about it.
Give me an example of a good government project that you were involved in. I know you mentioned Barton Springs. Is that, is that the one for you?
That's a big one for me because it affects so many people on a regular basis who, who love Barton Springs and enjoy it. One of the things that we've really pushed hard on and been, I think, somewhat successful in is advancing the availability of affordable housing. Austin has gotten just unbearably expensive and we've driven a lot of people out. But we've partnered with developers on a mechanism for buying down the cost of, of housing. And we now have in the pipeline, some on the ground and some in the process, almost 12,000 units of housing, three-quarters of it deeply affordable, 60% AMI and below, area median income and below. And I'm, I'm proud of that. It's, it's not well-known at the county, but I'm, I'm proud of that work.
Bridget Shea, county commissioner, Travis County, Austin, Texas. Apparently I have to go to Barton Springs and go swimming in the cool water and I have to get more barbecue, I guess, while I'm here. Is that, is that it?
Absolutely. That sums it up. Beautiful.
All right. Thank you so much for taking time. Thanks for talking with us. Good luck. Enjoy the conference.
You're so welcome. You're so welcome. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Where do you get your news from? Where do you get your state and local government news from? Because that's getting harder and harder. And it's essential to stay updated with your community. And it's becoming increasingly important to know what's going on in other cities and states because they're likely facing challenges that you're grappling with too, or you're going to face eventually. That's why we'd like to welcome our new partner, Route 50, to the show. Route 50 is a leading online publication covering state and local governments across the country. They've written about states protecting themselves against the rise in cyber attacks, counties using AI to better support citizen services, local responses to crumbling infrastructure and extreme weather and much, much more. There's a lot there. It's a one-stop shop for issues affecting state and local governments and their residents. And that's you. That's all of us. Do yourself a favor and go to route50.com to see the topics and solutions they cover and learn what other people in government are doing. They also deliver a daily newsletter called Route 50 Today. I see it in my inbox every morning.[1735.56] I see it in my inbox every morning. I check it out, and you should too. Thanks again, Route 50. We're excited to have you onboard and being a partner here at the Good Government Show. What is it that county government does? That's the question county commissioners get asked the most, and the simple answer is everything. On the Good Government Show, we're so lucky to have talked with so many county commissioners and other county officials that have shown us how effective county government is. County government dates back to, get this, 1634, making it one of the oldest forms of government in the United States. Think about it, roads, highways, hospitals, schools, recycling, law enforcement, water, sewers, and most of the county, those services are maintained by the county. That's county government. The National Association of Counties represents all 3,069 counties across the USA. NACO helps county government work better together through things like sharing best practices. When county government works well, well, that's just good government. Well, I'm ashamed to admit it, but I didn't get to the LBJ Museum, but it's on my list for my next visit to Austin. I did manage to eat a lot, and that's a lot of barbecue while I was in Texas. It's all good. And the work she did preserving Barton Springs, a clean, refreshing lake in the middle of the city, sounds like it's made a huge difference. From a journalist to an advocate to a county commissioner, I wouldn't say her journey is complete, but she's taken action and worked to make a difference, and that's what good government is all about. Well, that's our show. Please like us and share us with your friends or review us right here where you're listening. And check out our website, goodgovernmentshow.com for extras. Help us keep telling stories of good government in action everywhere. Join us again for another episode right here.